I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first thing on the agenda are three proclamations. There'll be, first will be the National Service Recognition Day, and those present, Lori Bishop, Executive Director of the Flint Hills Volunteer Center, Nathan Bergman, Board President, Joni Hines, if I pronounce all these well, Board Secretary, and Jen Alley and Sidney Baker, both Board Members. And they will receive the proclamation. The second one is the Fair Housing Month, and those that will receive it are Eric Cattell, Director, and Christina La Cour, Grant Administrator for the City's Community Development Department, and Robin Dreher, Human Resource Specialist, City of Manhattan, and Joanne Sutton, Executive Director of the Manhattan Housing Authority, and Kelly Adams, 2018 President, and Margaret Pendleton, Association Executive of the Manhattan Association of Realtors. The third proclamation is the Month of the Military Child. Colonel John Lawrence, Garrison Commander at Fort Riley, and Wendy Winston, Child and Youth Services Coordinator at Fort Riley, will be here. So, I would ask that those associated with the National Service Recognition proclamation join me at the, let me get them all in order here, hold on. Join me at the microphone. Hi, everybody. She brought a whole bunch of people with her. So, the, this is the proclamation for the National Service Recognition Day. Whereas service to others is a hallmark of the American character and central to how we meet our challenges, and whereas the nation's counties and cities are increasingly turning to national service and volunteerism as a cost-effective strategy to meet their needs, and whereas the senior core participants address the most pressing challenges facing our communities, from educating students to the jobs of the 21st century, to fighting the opioid epidemic, to responding to natural disasters, to supporting veterans and their families, and the national service expands economic opportunity by creating more sustainable, resilient communities, and providing education, career skills, and leadership abilities for those who serve. The senior core participants serve in more than 50,000 locations around the country, bolstering the civic, neighborhood, and faith-based organizations that are so vital to our communities and social well-being. The national service participants increase the impact of the organizations they serve, both through their direct service and by managing millions of additional volunteers. And whereas, national service represents a unique public-private partnership that invests in community solutions and leverages non-federal resources to strengthen community impact and increase the return on taxpayers' dollars. Whereas the national service participants demonstrate commitment, dedication, and patriotism by making an intensive commitment to service, a commitment that remains with them in their future endeavors, and the national service, the Corporation for National and Community Services, service, share a priority with local leaders nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, and strengthen communities, and is joining the National League of Cities, the National Association of Counties, Cities of Service, and local leaders across the country for National Service Recognition Day today, April the 3rd. Now therefore, I, Linda Morse, Mayor of the City of Manhattan, Kansas, do hereby proclaim April 3rd as National Service Recognition Day. So Lori Bishop, if you'd like to come forward and, and maybe, yeah, maybe you have some words of wisdom for us.
Well, I'll try there. Now, thank you so much for allowing us to come here for the city commissioners who joined us today on our service project. We did a project where we invited elected officials to come. We prepared hygiene kits for our fit closet, the families in transition, to help benefit USD 383. So, we were pleased to have several people join us today. This is about our RSVP program. RSVP is Retired Senior Volunteer Program for those 55 and older. We have been in the Manhattan area for 44 years. Next year, we'll be celebrating the big 45. And so, we've had a lot of volunteers that have been with us over 20 years, and so, it just goes to show, a lot of our retired veterans are part of our volunteer program. So, they gave their time, they gave their service, and they're still to this day giving back to their community. And so, we're very proud of all of our volunteers. And I brought some of these volunteers with me. They do wonderful, wonderful work in our community, and I'm sure many of you have, I'm hoping, have heard about us. And Nathan is our Board President, Nathan Bergman, and on the back row is some of our Board Members, and we're excited to have them with us today. So, again, thank you for this honor.
It's a pleasure to have you here. Thank you very much for all the work you and the volunteers at, yeah, I'm glad I said Our community probably couldn't run without you. You have such an army of volunteers. It's just outstanding. Okay. The next one is the Fair Housing Month. Robin Dreher, Christina La Cour, Eric Cattell, Joanne Sutton, Kelly Adams, Margaret Pendleton. Ta-da. Okay, Joanne couldn't come, okay. So, the proclamation says, and this is nice, it's short, thank you. Whereas, the Congress of the United States passed the Civil Rights Act of 1968, of which Title VIII declared that the law of the land would now guarantee the rights of equal housing opportunity, and whereas, the City of Manhattan is committed to the mission and intent of Congress to provide fair and equal housing opportunities for all, and today, many realty companies and associations support fair housing laws. And whereas, the fair housing groups and the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development have, over the years, received thousands of complaints of alleged illegal housing discrimination, and found too many that have proved upon investigation to be violations of fair housing laws. And whereas, equal housing opportunity is a condition of life in our city that can and should be achieved. Now therefore, I, Linda Morse, Mayor of the City of Manhattan, on behalf of its citizens, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2018 as Fair Housing Month in Manhattan, and encourage all residents to, just think about the practices that they use. So, let me, I think I'm gonna pass these out. Probably lost them. And I'd invite you to speak if you have some, some additional thoughts.
Well, as the mayor said, one of the, one of the activities you can participate in is the annual Fair Housing Seminar, which we put on annually with the Manhattan Housing Authority. There's some flyers out front. You can sign up for free on the city website. It's just a morning session. On April 19th, the first item will, Chad Bunter and our department will be doing a short session on the Unified Development Ordinance. Then Brad Klaassen and the Code Services Office will be doing a session on existing structure inspections. Then the Riley County Police will be doing a session on identifying criminal and drug activities. And then the last session, which is always popular by housing and credit counseling, will be about the various landlord-tenant acts, and particularly service animals and discrimination issues. So, there is still room, there's limited seating, but there is still room, so we encourage you to sign up, and it's on April 19th.
I guess I would just like to thank the mayor and the city council for the proclamation. As you stated, this is the 50th anniversary of the Fair Housing Act, and, and I would encourage my fellow Realtors to attend the city seminar, as well as there's many webinars that the National Association Realtors puts out. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you all for coordinating this effort. It's a good thing. At this point, I'd like to ask Colonel John D. Lawrence and Wendy Winston from Fort Riley. Sheila, you're welcome to come up, too. That's what makes it the Month of the Military Child. Yusha Reddy and the Mayor Protem of Junction City and I were at Fort Riley this morning for, as they gathered, looked to me like the leadership of the non-military organizations at Fort Riley for a briefing. And, on the occasion, this is the, April is the Month of the Military Child, and you have to stop and think about how those children move around the country frequently, and don't stay in one place, maybe like you and your children have, but they have some, just some different needs, and, or all people have the same needs, actually. They may be disadvantaged, but, let me read the proclamation, and they'll have more to say. It'll be right on target. Whereas, since 1986, the Department of Defense has recognized military children during the month of April. Because of their service, commitment, and sacrifice to supporting the Army's mission, it is important to honor and celebrate our military's youngest heroes. And whereas, the Month of the Military Child is an opportunity to remember children's roles in strengthening the military family. This year's theme is Brave Hearts, Resilient Souls. And whereas, the theme recognizes that strong and resilient Army children are essential to the success of the Army's mission. And whereas, living in different states, countries, and continents, military children face unique challenges that most youth their age do not experience. They are equipped to adapt to present and future changes, such as permanent changes of station, deployments, reintegration, care of their wounded warrior parent, or coping with the loss of a fallen parent. Through each new step in life, they always remain steady, ready, and resilient. And whereas, we, the leaders of Fort Riley, Manhattan, and Junction City, are thankful for the positivity and enthusiasm of military children as we keep moving forward. We are committed to maintaining excellence in schools, youth services, and childcare to ensure that families always receive the best programming, no matter where their next, their next adventure takes them. Now therefore, I, Linda Morse, Mayor of the City of Manhattan, do hereby proclaim April 2018 as the month of, the Month of the Military Child, and encourage the First Infantry Division and Fort Riley, along with Junction City and Manhattan, to observe the month with appropriate ceremonies and activities that honor, support, and thank our military children. And I'd like to present the proclamation. Colonel Lawrence?
Well, good evening. First of all, I'd like to thank both Mayor Morse and Commissioner Reddy for coming to our event today. They are both huge supporters of Fort Riley, as is the City of Manhattan. As we go into the Month of the Military Child, we have already coordinated events throughout Manhattan, Junction City, and on the installation itself. And this is critical to our children. Because as we look at the children, as you heard, in 1986, the Department of Defense recognized this month as the Month of the Military Child. That in itself is to recognize the commitment, the sacrifices, and the, basically, the resiliency of our military child, as they support their families that are serving their country. As you know, right now, we have approximately 25% of our military children attend schools in USD 383 and 475. On post, we support over 830 children in our Child Youth Services, which Ms. Winston actually operates. So, to recognize our children, and then to bring the community in and to support us, is just incredible, and we very much greatly appreciate everything you do for Fort Riley and for the garrison at Fort Riley. So, thank you very much. Wendy, do you have anything?
I think you added what I wanted to say.
Okay. But thank you so much.
And this is a beautiful poster. It was the proclamation at Fort Riley today. And so, they did it up in style. So, I think I was, we didn't see Gary. That was, those were really important proclamations. At this point, we have, next on the agenda, public comments. And this is an opportunity to speak to any issue that's not, for the public, to speak on any issue that is not on our regular agenda this evening. Does anyone have something they'd like to visit with us about? Seeing none, I will close the public comments section, and consider that this is the opportunity for Commissioner comments.
Yeah, just one thing I want to bring attention to. This Saturday in City Park, the Little Apple Pride celebration will be happening. I just wanted to call attention to that because I think it's a great event, shows how Manhattan's an equitable place, and we're a welcoming community of all kinds of diverse populations. So, yeah, 12 to 4 o'clock at City Park, Little Apple Pride.
Yeah, May 10th is gonna be Johnny Cobb's birthday, the big statue out here, and the chamber sponsoring a little event over there. Be a, you know, fun run for a mile. You can get Johnny Cobb bobbleheads, join the Johnny Cobb Club for $5. There'll probably be book signing, Johnny Cobb will be present. It's gonna be an interesting event, and any proceeds we get from that will of course help with the Johnny Cobb Plaza project that a citizens group is working on, which is really gonna enhance the appearance of the statue. So, mark that down on your calendar, bring the kids, it's gonna be a lot of fun. I think there's a giant birthday cake for about 300 people to get a slice, so, should be a great event.
Yes, K-State has their open house this weekend. For those of you that have never gone there, this is your chance to eat chocolate-covered bugs, and play all kinds of games, and visit all the departments that are offered, all the talent that we have in Manhattan. And it'll be an exciting weekend, there's plenty going on, so I just want to make you aware of that. If you have children, this is a perfect day to go spend at K-State. All kinds of fun, hands-on activities are usually going on. On Fort Riley, they're having Ammunition Amnesty Day. Day is actually April 5th through the 6th. Soldiers, civilians, and family members will be able to safely and anonymously turn in ammunition during Ammunition Amnesty Event on April 5th through 6th on Fort Riley. Bins are at three locations on post. They're at the corner of, I might be saying this wrong, corner of Pennines Drive and Bramford Road. Second location is corner of Normandy Drive and Graves Street. Third location is 919 Casson Hill Road. So, no questions asked, no names, no badges or anything necessary, just drop off your ammunition. Spring cleanup is going on around Manhattan. This is your chance to go, I know it's a little cold, but if you have anything that needs to be picked up, I think two days are already done, so there's still 4th, 5th, and 6th for this week that's left, certain designated areas. If you go on the website, or on our Facebook page, or Twitter, or anything of that sort, if you're into social media, you'll find out the exact locations. This is a great opportunity for you to put any kind of yard clippings, anything you have that you want the city to pick up. It's free, so please do take advantage of it.
I'd like to compliment the many partners that contributed to the Easter Fun Day at City Park this last Saturday. The Lions Club had an Easter egg hunt, and I may not get all, Eddie, you need to add too, when I get through, what did I, add what I missed. But, there was a group called Common Table that cooked pancakes. There were, well, children had a chance to climb through the fire engines and the police cars, and, so now it's your turn, because I'm probably running out.
Well, I'll just say it was a very wide-based community event. We had quite a number of volunteers that were there, helping with the event. We had different bounce houses that were there, helping with the event. I don't want to attempt to name all the particip, all the partners with it, because there were quite a few. And we appreciate that community support, and it was, the weather helped with us, so that we could pull it off okay, but, very popular event. And we appreciate the Lions Club, because they've been having their Easter egg hunt for quite a few years, and allowing us to actually partner with them as well.
There was a money drop. Was that ESB?
I don't know.
I think, that sponsored that.
I don't know.
I didn't get to see it, but that's what I recall. There's, on April, this coming Saturday, April 7th, there will be a Little Apple Lit Fest, which is an opportunity to celebrate literature with events for kids, teens, and adults at Manhattan's first literature festival. And it will begin at 11 o'clock and go till later in the afternoon. There's more information on the Manhattan Public Web, Public Library website. And we've talked this evening about the Fair Housing Seminar. There's also a flood aware, this is Flood Awareness Month. Is that not appropriate for April? Even though we can't get rid of the, we can't get warm weather in here, I think. But, April is Flood Awareness Month in Manhattan. Information about historic floods, disaster preparedness, and flood insurance will be shared on social media to help raise public awareness. Resources are available through FEMA to help you prepare an emergency kit, and the Northeast Kansas Notification System will send emergency notices for severe weather, including flood watches and warnings to anyone in the area. You can sign up for the emergency notices through the Riley County website at RileyCountyKS.gov, and check the city's Facebook and Twitter for more information. And the Parks and Recreation Registration is open for the, for the summer events. Special events such as the Little Apple Paddle in July fill up quickly, so I encourage everyone to register early. Event details are available online and in their, in the new catalog, and it's available in City Hall lobby. And finally, I just want to mention that April is both Sexual Assault Awareness Month and Sexually Transmitted Disease Awareness Month. And this is the time for survivors and advocacy groups to work together to raise awareness and work on ways to prevent it. Community members should embrace your voice to inform how to promote safety, respect, and stop sexual violence. So, what can you do? Show support for survivors, stand up to victim blaming, shut down rape jokes, correct harmful misconceptions, promote healthy consent, and practice healthy communication with children. This can't go on. So, please speak up. It's just wrong. And so, the, having, I think that's over. Yes? Please.
In conjunction with the cleanup campaign that's being done by the city during the week, we have a couple of other activities. Some of you may have seen in the paper and heard on the radio, but we have a couple of things going on. One is the Polish the Apple, which is a, an attempt to really clean up the city in one month. That'll be affecting those who have businesses downtown in Aggieville, and then also in private residences. And this is really a beginning to do some networking, and the networking goal is to connect all of those organizations around the city who already do great work to take care of people, outreach to them, whether they're adopting schools, whether they're taking care of clothing needs, or food needs, or doing some neighbor-to-neighbor help with all of those people on the other side that really need some help. So, Rod Harms, I have to congratulate him for all the hard work that he's been doing on this, and those activities are kicking off right now. And hopefully, after this kind of test case that we do through the month of April, we'll be able to continue this throughout all the year, and really build a network here in Manhattan. Thanks.
Thank you. Continuing on through the agenda, this is, the items on the consent agenda are of a routine, routine and housekeeping nature, or those items which have previously been reviewed by the city commission. A commissioner may request an item be removed, be moved to the end of the general agenda. Does the commission have any questions or comments on any of the consent agenda items?
I just have one really quick question. Item M, to be clear, that has, that item will have no impact on the discussions with the reorganization of FERDA. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I just want to be sure. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
I wanted to comment on just a couple of things here. I have a really question for Ron. On item E, I understand what it is, you know, on this supplemental agreement, and we're supposed to vote on it, but we don't really have a choice here, do we? We can't vote no. This is KDOT just making a decision, and we're rubber stamping it.
So, generally, these agreements come with the grant offer. KDOT has been lagging in their ability to keep up with their grant offers, and, and so normally, it's much clearer that you're getting the agreement with the grant offer. And so, if you want the grant, which we've already, you've already passed a recommendation that says you want the grant, and so this is the follow-up agreement that just solidifies that. You're not obligated to enter the grant agreement, but you won't get the grant funds if you don't.
Okay, that, that's what I thought. So, I've got no problem with that. I'll vote yes for that. We, we want the grant money. The other, the other items on here, which, you know, which I find interesting, you know, for people that aren't reading in detail the consent agenda, you know, items J and K are really street maintenance. We've got $2.2 billion there, which Public Works is taking care of. So, for those of you concerned about, you know, the money going to the streets, you know, there it is. There's one of the first parts, and a good chunk of that, $1.3 million, is from the special sales tax on street maintenance that was passed. And, and if you're curious about which streets, I won't read a list of that, they're on the city website, you can look in there and see which streets, and I think they run a pretty good gamut, and they're, it's following the priority of which ones are the worst, so progress is being made there. And then item M, which is the MPO, it's being expanded, and I want to highlight there, the good news on that is, it's gonna lower the city's outlay to the MPO, and I'm in favor of that, because that'll help with the budget.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
One second.
I just, under discussion, I would just clarify that Ron has indicated that in the next couple of weeks, we'll get an update on the streets that have already been repaired, sent, maintenance-wise, since the sales tax was implemented, and what is coming next, and maybe what's on down the road. But, we have asked for an update on where we are with regard to the street maintenance sales tax, to, so we can get, just, you know, satisfy ourselves that, that it was a good thing. Right now, it's unknown. So, all right. There's a motion and a second. Would the city clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Morse?
Yes.
Commissioner Dodson?
Yes.
Commissioner Reddy?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
And Commissioner McKee?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
The next item is the general agenda. We're moving right along, now that the proclamations are over. So, item A, we will consider the first reading of an ordinance, rezoning 530 and 532 North 14th and 1323 Laramie Street, from R3 with the university overlay, multiple family residential district with university overlay district, to C3 Aggieville Business District. And here to present is Chad Bunter, Assistant Director of Community Development.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. Providing an overview of this request, and be happy, happy to answer any questions for you. There are three separate properties that the owners currently own. I believe they are in some sort of contractual agreement to sell to Mr. Chen. The property we're looking at is near Aggieville. It's these three properties right here, at the corner of 14th and Laramie. Kind of the landmarks around it, the Burger King and the new Student Life Center for Manhattan Christian College, just on the, the western edge of the Aggieville District. The request before you is to rezone these three properties from their current residential district, with a couple of overlays, as you mentioned, to the C3 Aggieville Business District. These are pictures of the three houses. There are a duplex on two of the properties, and a fourplex on the third. Kind of recapping what I just said, sorry about that. As you can see- As you can see how they lay out. There are no specific redevelopment plans that have been provided to us, no building permit or anything to that nature, although it is our understanding that there is redevelopment plans in the works to occur sometime that would be in line with the Aggieville Business District. Surrounding zoning, as I mentioned, R3 with multitude of the overlays. And then it's just on its edge of the C3 District. There's the four-family residential to the south and then the Christian College PUD to the west. Sorry, should have skipped this. Kind of gives you an idea of what is surrounding the property, the site that we're looking at rezoning. The property is envisioned through the comprehensive plans, future land use map to one day be rezoned to the central core district, which corresponds with the Aggieville Business District. And it was also included in the Aggieville community vision to someday redevelop and be a part of the Aggieville District. So the proposed rezoning conforms to the community plans that we have in place. I don't think I have much more than that. Again, I'd be happy to answer any questions. City administration is recommending approval. The planning board also is recommending approval after they've held their public hearing a couple of weeks ago to rezone these three sites or this site to C3. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioners.
Just one clarification. Based on what I read at the public hearing, none of the adjacent landowners were opposed to this. Is that correct? Okay, and that's always important to me, that the adjacent landowners agree to what is taking place. And so I don't have a problem with it.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the thing that will drive me on this is the-- when we go to C3, and that basically looks like all the property to the north and to the east, we must make sure that that thing comports with the Aggieville community vision. My understanding is that they envision, that is, the new owners envision that they will begin construction only after all three properties are razed and that it's likely to be two- or three-story building and not just a kind of an L-shaped strip mall.
They've mentioned to us what their development plans could be or what they desire, but we haven't seen a building permit, so I'll probably reserve any comments on what they're really proposing. Today, or the residential uses today would conform to what is allowed in the C3 District. And then if those homes or those duplexes and fourplexes would be removed, then that future building would need to conform to the C3 District, which--
Well, the description that you gave us on page 256 went through great pains to go through all the things that the Aggieville plan had in it. So, you know, what we're buying here is C3.
Correct.
And when we buy C3, we can get anything that's contained in what's allowed in C3. So what I would like to see again is a building like that has been described, which is perhaps some retail on the bottom and residents on the top floors.
I would very much like to see that also, being that it's straight zoning. There's really no mechanism for us to enforce that or to require that, although my guess is that they're not going through this endeavor to use a lower use or lower development than what is potential with the C3. So I think it will be okay.
Okay.
Okay, seeing no further questions. Thank you very much, Chad. At this point, I'd like to open the floor to the public for comment on the proposal. If there's anyone here that would like to speak to that, if you would come forward. Seeing none, we will proceed. Is there further discussion on the part of the commission, or are we ready for a motion?
I'm ready for a motion mainly because there's not enough information about what's going on. It seems like it would be compatible, and it seems like it would go in the right direction. So I'm in favor of it because of all that I'm anticipating from that location. And I would, I think it's fair to assume that the owner wants that development to be successful as well.
It's a straight zoning matter, so, okay. With that, is there a motion?
I move-- that we consider first reading of the ordinance rezoning 530, 532 North 14th Street and 1323 Laramie Street from R3 UO Multiple Family Residential District with University Overlay District to C3 Aggieville Business District.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. City Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Dodson.
Yes.
Commissioner Ready.
Yes.
Commissioner Butler.
Yes.
Commissioner McKee.
Yes.
And Mayor Morse.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. The next item is a discussion item. There'll be no vote this evening. And we will be discussing City Commission meeting procedures and public input guidelines. The presenters are Kyle Mangus, Assistant City Manager, and Katie Jackson, City Attorney. So if you'd want to proceed.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. We've kind of been talking about rules and decorum at City Commission meetings, and we've talked with the commission, gave some initial feedback. Katie and her legal staff did some more research that you'll see, so she'll jump in here at different parts of the presentation. And feel free to ask questions, kind of a dialogue so we can get feedback tonight to bring back a resolution. So kind of jumping off about, for the general public as well, about what is a public meeting policy. Basically, the commission, we have meetings to conduct business. So that a policy enables the body to conduct that business in efficient, effective, open, orderly manner. So it's pretty simple. We have a resolution now, 70996, which basically sets our meeting procedures. So things like when we have questions, when we have public input, when we take motions, when we have seconds. You know, that's something that we passed, obviously, back in 1996. That is a vehicle that we see we could modify for this possible future resolution. So the different laws that apply besides our resolution, we have, obviously, our Kansas Open Mediacs, our public hearing laws, making sure that we have due process and public notice. And then First Amendment is something that we always have to deal with in the public realm, reasonable and content neutral. You know, there's something that we need to be aware of that I think we find ourselves sometimes trying to set on-the-spot rules, which are okay as long as we're consistently applying them, which is hard to do sometimes. So I think that's an area where we're hoping this could help clarify some of those items. So right now, what laws don't apply to this? There is no law that requires the governing body to follow or adopt any meeting procedural rules. So when we passed our current resolution, there wasn't anything requiring us to do that. There's also no default rules if we have no policy. You also don't have to let the public speak at all during the meeting. That's not required, and I don't think that's the right path to go, but there are communities that go that route, and they don't have-- they have no public comment at all. Katie, feel free to jump in if I'm missing anything on any of these. So we kind of go through about why these are a positive thing, these public meeting policies. For one, it does benefit the public. I think you could say that first bullet up there about business being conducted on the date. So we put out a public notice, our meeting's on a Tuesday. As you all are aware, we've had some late-night parties here where we've been here 1:00, 2:00 in the morning, and we're past midnight. Technically, we're on to the next day. So we didn't notice that day, technically. So we're making sure we're conducting our business on the day that was in the notice. You also have people in the audience who are here who want to give input, that are waiting their timeframe. Obviously, there's certain agenda items that end up taking some time, and it could be a very short agenda item at the end that they're waiting four or five hours to get to. We're also trying to respect those citizens' First Night Amendments. And then in late-night meetings, you can see some of the things we have on there about transportation issues, safety concerns. I think one that's on here is transparency. We talk about the state government passing bills and doing things at 1:00, 2:00 in the morning and the ability to be aware of what is going on there. I think that's an important thing as well. We complain about that, so we don't want to be a contributor to that as well. We want to make sure we're trying to be as transparent as possible and make decisions where people are aware of what's going on. So it also benefits our city business. You know, the main purpose of our City Commission legislative meetings is to conduct business. It's to have consent agenda, general agenda items, to get feedback from the commission and to have motions. So we want to optimize your ability to discuss and conduct business here, provide rules of order as best we can, and then ensure compliance with those laws that we need to. It is a best practice. You know, we reached out to the League and the National League of Cities. They both have policy recommendations, I would say, for best practices for following when you adopt something like this. So what risks exist with no public meeting policy? I think you'll see kind of these, the legal issues we've kind of gone through. There's just practical issues as well, just effectiveness and order of the ability to get through items. Agreements among the commissioners, debate among the commissioners over procedures, how we do things, if somebody wants to talk about how much time we're giving someone to speak versus not speak. That can eliminate some of that. And then there is a tactic there about public input. I mean, there's a tactic that you flood the commission meeting and you just provide public input till you're wearing somebody out. And I think that prevents you from taking action and providing input that you need as a commissioner to do business. So Katie's legal staff kind of looked at-- they surveyed some Kansas cities, and they also looked at USD 383, what they have in their policy. These next couple of slides just kind of talk about procedural components, public comment components, agenda item components. So some of the things they saw that really are defined in some of these policies these cities have, they really define agenda development, content order, where meetings take place, locations, end times, presiding officer duties, which is in our current resolution as well. Obviously, it defines the mayoral duties. And then decorum during the meeting and public comment rules. So on the open public comment, we'll kind of get into our resolution here in a little bit, but we saw some cities that allow it, some don't. Majority limited time per speaker, three to five minutes per speaker and overall time limits for that general public comment. Majority did say that, you know, that content must be about city business that's not already on the agenda if it's an agenda item. Comment on the agenda item, obviously. And majority did have sign up in advance, USD 383 does. And then open public comment, we saw some that did at the beginning of the inning meeting, some at the end. Some even chose to not televise public comment. We saw someone who did that. On a agenda item comment, very similar, per speaker time limits, some overall time limits based upon the item itself and prior sign up as well. So general rules of decorum, when you're looking at that, and we can kind of define this a little bit. You know, oftentimes, we have speakers sometimes that will come up here. You know, they might try to address an individual commissioner, you know, and speak to them. That's really not the point of providing that comment. You know, the idea is to speak to the commission as a whole. So most of them tried to keep those comments addressed to the governing body and not to an individual member. Also, not trying to have a back-and-forth for someone at the podium to speak with the audience. That's really not the place for it. Obviously, generally, no comments, profane, you know, we haven't-- we don't want to see that. Majority only allowed one at a time to come speak as well and not create a dialogue, so to speak. And then once public comment was closed in these policies, the intent is, you know, it's not a, let's yell from the audience, try to reopen public comment, let's create more dialogue, so. So all of these things, when you're talking about public comment, agenda item comment, all have to do with public engagement. One of the things that I think Katie and her staff noticed, and I think we've noticed as well, is that, you know, we want to encourage public attendance. We want to encourage public engagement. Commissioner Ray, I've heard you comment on this too at the Law Board as well, that some people aren't comfortable coming in front of the camera. They're not comfortable coming to the meeting. Some people want that avenue to come to. So we need to encourage multiple avenues for people, whether it's via email to commissioners, whether it is coming to the meeting, whether they have, you know, other comments, town halls. There's examples of us having those town halls in the past that have been successful, that is a little more relaxed atmosphere, not on TV, subject-specific. So I think we can definitely look at-- we have electronic avenues via our website, social media apps, that we can solicit comments from people, we can put information in. You know, if they have comments they want to make that we want to put in our packet that goes out to the public, so they can't come here, but they want to make that information known, how they feel about something, we can get that from them and put it in the packet and make sure that everybody gets that feedback. So let's kind of go into our summary of the draft policy that you have in front of you. And just really, I'll try to hone in on a couple of really decision points that I'd like to get feedback on before we try to draft something. Our current resolution, presiding officer is the mayor. That doesn't change. In their absence, Mayor Pro Tem. One of the things in our draft policy they talk about is it doesn't deal with public hearings. We do public hearings, like when we were looking at the demolition of the House that we recently did, we had to do a public hearing. Or, you know, we have a lot of different other, our budget public hearing. One of the things that we saw that might have been suggested was do public hear-- this doesn't affect public hearings, that's an outside thing. This policy wouldn't affect that. But the public hearings would be held after the consent agenda before the general agenda. So you have your public hearing, people can come in, make their comments, and then we would go to our general agenda items. So one of the things we put in here too to get feedback on, adjournment times. We saw several cities that have adjournment times for meetings, work sessions. Those times, flexible. We just wanted to get a feel for the commission on-- basically, those are end times that at that point, if we're in the middle of an item or something, the commission would make a motion if they would like to extend up to midnight because we're only noticing that day. So how does the commission feel about those timeframes? Does that seem reasonable? I think one of the things to remember is if we do draft a policy that kind of-- when we run into these time issues, it's usually because we have very long public comment. So if we have more limited public comment, more targeted public comment, I think the meetings will run more efficient, smoother, and these timeframes won't be-- because the 10:30 is obviously three and a half hours after we start here. 7:30 is two hours on work sessions. I'm open to any feedback you have now on those.
Are you looking for it right now? Okay, well, I have some feedback. Is there more, by the way, to your presentation?
Yes, there is.
Okay, but do you want feedback on these three bullets?
I would. I think it would help us as we try to bring something back. If there's major heartburn with an item, I mean, we can obviously adjust some things.
I have lots of comments, but if you want to talk about this. I, for, let me just first say that we do a lot of things right, trying to be transparent. There's always room for improvement, and this is one of those areas.
Sure.
So, meeting agenda process, consent. I think I'm okay with the first three bullets.
Okay.
We haven't got to the timeframes and limits of that yet. But for the fourth bullet, I'm not comfortable with. I don't think it should end at 10:30. I do think it should go to 11:30. And I don't think it can end at 7:30. I think that should go to 9:30, mainly because we like to have a very thorough discussion. And sometimes, any agenda, if we try to put it within just that timeframe, we will have so many agenda items to talk about, I don't know how we're going to fit all of those in. Sometimes, when we just have two agenda items, it takes us four hours to discuss. And we have, this commission, I know, likes to ask a lot of questions. And I think that's something our community and our citizens expect us to do. I've known some commissions where they end early because they think 9:00 is late. 9:00, I've never heard any one of us complain about being late. And I think that's what we kind of signed up for. And I think it's good for the community to know that we might end at 9:30, but 7:30, I think, is just-- that we might end at 9:30, but 7:30, I think, is just too early even for a work session. I say 11:30 for the 10:30 one, instead of 10:30 to go to 11:30, to make sure that, I do think a meeting should end by midnight and get table, that item might need to be table for our next time, because I just think by then you're probably a little exhausted. And the public might be exhausted as well from thinking about what's going on. So I do think that needs to be, end around midnight, but I don't think, I think 10:30 is early for me, especially if we're talking about any item. Sometimes I come in here thinking, oh, this is going to be a short meeting, and I have always been wrong when I thought that. So I just want to make sure that we look at those numbers a little bit more. And sometimes people might assume, oh, they end at 7:30, so it must be over, why bother? Or it'll end at 10:30, why bother? But if you extend it, I think the anticipation is, it could go this long, so.
Yeah, I think the way it's written now with, I mean, I'm not sure, 10:30, basically, it says the meeting has to end by midnight, is the way those two, the way those two were...
It is that each time we have to make a motion to extend it 30 more minutes.
Correct. So really, if you did 11:30, you'd only extend it once and then end it, versus a couple of times. Okay. Anybody else on that?
Yes, I don't have a problem with three as written. And the reason is, you know, I sort of like that, having to extend it for 30 minutes, because I've been listening to people, you know, for the past six years, and part of our problem is we won't stay on topic. And maybe those rules will force people to stay on topic, because we don't stay focused all the time on the issue at hand, and we go off into la-la land all the time, and that will help us stay on track.
A question with regard to item two. So you're proposing to move the public hearings between consent and agenda, because right now they're...
Right now, there's, we've had some on consent, some on general, so this would just more define it. We, our consent usually goes, obviously, we have some comments typically, it goes pretty quick. Typically, we saw some cities that did public hearings before consent. We really didn't think that fit, because we have a lot of consultants and different people who come in here for those consent agenda items, just to be here for that, with any questions, come up and leave. So we thought after consent, have those public hearings, and hold our general agenda items.
That essentially put a third category in there, like anything that requires a public hearing would be voted on in that, whether it was consent or whatever?
Correct. It almost, Katie, you can weigh it.
And some nights, there'd be nothing there, but some nights, there might be one or two items.
Yeah, because we don't have public hearings every meeting. You know, obviously, we have them on certain items. But yeah, when we would, I think the idea would, because we're not proposing here, as you'll see as we get a little further in about timeframes and comment timeframes, we've not proposed to do that on public hearings, because there's a little bit different rules there, so.
So they ask, the issue is, we'd have a public hearing agenda, and some meetings we'd have them, some meetings we wouldn't, but you would, you would hold that discussion item on that public hearing item at that time, and...
So it wouldn't be on the consent agenda like it is now?
No, it would follow the consent agenda and be the public hearing agenda.
Separate. It would be totally separate. Okay. All right. I agree. I think midnight is prob, I mean, given the publication issue for our meeting, or notices of our meetings, I think certainly I could live with the midnight for legislative sessions, and 10:30, I suppose, for work sessions. I think most of our meetings end well before that. Those meetings that we have had, as far as I'm concerned, that have run late, have been because there was a room full of people, and quite frankly, this is a democracy, and I want to hear what they have to say. And I'm not all about cutting people off and dictating to them. My long view is that a developer has an opportunity to work with the city administration and for a year and a half, a year, six months, whatever. And then the public gets a notice on Friday at 3:00, and they have only till Tuesday night to be here to make comments. And I think that that is so compressed that it's hard to get your thoughts together, you've got a weekend in between. I mean, I just am not about cutting people off. I want to hear what the, we've not had a problem, as far as I'm concerned, with the public being here. And occasionally, some, you know, I can agree with some parameters with regard to the length of presentations. We've had several that really go on and on, and they're the deal breakers for everybody else. And probably, we would just have to try to rein some of that in. But I just want to be sure that we give people the opportunity. I do like the idea of perhaps, and I'd like you to consider it, when someone is able to speak for a group, so, maybe they're the president of the homeowners association. As far as I'm concerned, that, rather than listening to 25 people and giving them five minutes apiece, we might be better advised to have a group presentation, or agree to the leader being able to make a whole discussion about their collective thoughts. The other thing is the, I agree, there shouldn't be the back and forth talk that, where the public, you know, asks another member of the public a question, or maybe the developer directly. I do want everything on the microphone and on the camera. I think that that's, it's nothing any more irritating than to be watching one of these and have the microphone not be on, and have the public talking to each other. So I do think that's important, especially in the interest of, as we have discussed periodically, in the interests of transparency. The, I'm, well...
And we'll get into, I mean, this is on, the meeting procedural side of things is kind of, I was just going to get feedback on that, then we'll kind of get into the public comment timeframes, and, you know, as you were saying. Procedural side, it was more just about the public hearing item being held after consent, and then timeframes, sounds like, you know, we've got a mixed bag. But I think the bottom line, if we're comfortable with putting a cap at midnight, and it sounds like we've got something that are good at 10:30, some not, 10:30 is an arbitrary time. I think we have, majority of our meetings get done between 9:00 and 10:00 o'clock, you know, I would say closer to 9:00, but we do have meetings where we have extended ones that go beyond that.
So Kyle, I just, I do think those need to be, this is the only time we get to discuss as a group. So sometimes those meetings, we do often end earlier, but just if, I don't want to keep stopping and moving at 30 minutes, or be always aware of, are we done at 10:30? Let's move it, let's move it. So at least if we can come at some point to an agreement, I think 7:30 is much too early even for a work session. And I do think 10:30 is early even for that, mainly because this is the only chance we get to have a thorough discussion and hear what the other ones say. And I don't think we go off message often. I think we are very cognizant about what we're discussing, at least 95% of the time. So I think it's pretty crucial that we have that discussion.
I was, I agree with Commissioner Reddy's thought right there, and I was going to kind of save it till public comment, because I think it feeds into public comment too.
Sure.
But one of the things that we have to keep in mind, that's unique with us versus maybe state level, is that, yeah, this is, it's beneficial for us to hear from the public, but it's also very beneficial for me to hear from them, because we can't meet as a group outside of these public meetings to discuss items. 7:30 for a work session seems really short. I don't think, I mean, I've only been on for three months, and I don't think we've had any work session that got done before 7:30. I could be wrong about that, but I don't think that we have. And, but I don't think that we were here unreasonably late. 10:30 also seems a little bit short for me, but I to, I 100% agree with the thought that we shouldn't be going past midnight. There, I just don't want us to get into a point where we're falling into a 10:30 number, and instead of tabling an issue, we rush through something.
Sure.
Rush through a decision instead of tabling it, and that's, I think that that's what it would lead us to, is rushing through our discussion, rather than pausing it and saving it for another time, because those items would be stacking up. So I think it's close to the mark, but I don't think maybe it's quite the right times. But I agree with the general idea that it's trying to accomplish.
And I think some of this ties in together, and I'll just go into the next one, but...
Let me comment on the one...
Go ahead, Mike. Sorry.
The last one, to me, I'm not sure, we can't just accomplish this by having a, just say outright that any session will not go beyond 11:45, say, and then it will be tabled to the next, to the next meeting. And then you're not setting kind of these artificial timelines. I think the goal here is to take care of the people that are coming here, and I think a lot of that will be taken care of just by what we're going to see on the next slide.
That's what I was gonna...
So, but it doesn't mean that we ought to have, these all-night sessions really don't accomplish much for us or for the public. They're just, and the other thing I think we have to be mindful of is, sometimes we get the scheduling, what I'd call out of sequence. In other words, we put the long one first, and then we've got people sitting out there suffering, waiting for us to be done on the long one. And, I mean, this is a little bit more art than science, but I think we've really got to be attentive to that.
I agree with what Mike said. I don't want to get into the voting on 30-minute increments. If we just set it as not going past midnight, I don't care if it's 11:45, we're not going to bump into those, that 30-minute. The other, and I agree with Mike, I remember the group that was here throughout the night of a long discussion, and at the very end, we felt pressure to make a decision, because a dozen people had been sitting here all night long, and we finally adjourned about 12:30. But, you know, so I'd like to figure out how to balance, I agree, try to balance our meetings. Sometimes we load up the meetings because we haven't met for two weeks or something, and so there has to be a way for us to spread some of these out. And I know you do a juggling act as it is, so I appreciate that. And sometimes we actually get new information at the city commi, at these meetings that really make us ask more questions and reevaluate continually throughout the meeting. So anyway, thank you.
I actually had the same exact thing written down, that as like a question statement. It seems to me that, again, from my four months being on here, that we tend to, what I think, we know the more contentious things, where more people are going to be here, tend to be at the end of the agenda. So when I think about the night that we had the hotel discussion, we had three, three or four items, I think it was four items, but at least three of those are pretty long items, all three of them, right? And if you would have looked at that agenda, if we really wanted to cut down on the time that the vast majority of the public had to be here, we almost had to flip that entire agenda over the other way.
Yeah.
And, I mean, but that's, that's true of a lot of our meetings, though. So I would echo that comment as well, is if we could, and again, yeah, there's not a science to it, but if we could be more cognizant of, we know public is going to be here to comment on this item, maybe this is the first thing that we cover in the agenda, and then a staff presentation saved to the end.
So if you don't mind, I'd like to have some conversation on that, because that's usually what the mayor and I spend the most amount of time on, is the order of the meeting. And so it's a philosophical thing of just that. So do you want to accommodate the majority of the people early, and a lot of times, some of the later items are paid consultants and that kind of thing, or staff issues, and make them wait? Or if you are pretty sure that it's only going to be a 15 or 20-minute item, do you go ahead and get that out of the way, and then make everybody else wait? So that's, that's really the dichotomy we're up against, and sometimes those little things that you think we're going to take 20 minutes, take two hours.
That's true. Yeah, no.
Because somebody comes late to the process.
Yeah, no, there's absolutely...
Those are hard to avoid.
Yeah, no, totally understand.
I would appreciate your philosophy on that.
My, I'm not mayor, but if I were, I would say, the one, if we're paying, we're paying those staff and consultants to be here, right? So if they have to wait here until 10:00?
The developer, maybe, probably, could be.
I mean, we're, like, the, again, I'm going back to the hotel and that report that we received on the study of the parking garage, right? We paid them to do that. So if we talk about the sell of a lot of lamb before we talk about the parking lot study, that is kind of like, sorry. I mean, there's a lot of public here waiting to comment on that, on the first item. So to me, I would rather the public discussion happen early on the items that we know there's going to be a lot of public discussion, and staff reports, consultant reports set at the end of the agenda. That's just my opinion. The rest of the commissioners might have different thoughts on that, but that's my opinion. And also, again, you're 100% right, there's not an exact science to it, an item that we don't think anybody's going to show up on, we could have a crowd. And there's, it's just how do we solve for the 80%, so.
I think anytime you find yourself buying extra food for us to eat, that discussion needs to come first.
There you go. It's a good predictor.
And then the rest of the staff can stay, because oftentimes, even the ones, like I said, I've consistently been wrong when I thought this item will not take very long because of the discussion we're having. I may have come in with my mind thinking, oh, I'm 90% sure I'm going to vote this way, but the discussion prompts me to think about things that I may not have considered. And that discussion gets prolonged to an hour or two hours sometimes. And like I said, any item I think that it won't take long, it's always taken more than an hour. But I think if you're, if you see we're going to expect a long crowd, a big crowd, then we need to have, we need, we work for Manhattan, for the people of Manhattan. The consultants work because we hired them on taxpayer money. So we need to be aware that people took time from their day jobs, from their weekends, whatever it is, to write comments, to organize, and to show up here on their time. The consultants' jobs, developers' jobs, they're getting paid to do this on their time, so they can afford to wait. But I think we owe it to our public that they come first, especially if it's an item they feel is important. What we feel is important is not always what the public thinks is important. I think that needs to come first.
I think majority of the time, they've tried to balance, we've tried to put hot topic items with a lot of public input first, and there's been times. It's important to remember, a lot of times, those are intermixed. The public is mad about something we've hired a consultant for, so, I mean, those kind of, sometimes those go together, so it's push and pull, but I think we can try and balance that, make sure we get people who are coming here to give comment, try to get them at the start of the meeting. They'll always be, the specific example you gave, I don't think we thought there was going to be very much public comment. Quite a few people did show up, surprises, so.
Hotel meeting, you didn't think there was going to be much public comment?
No, the VMI track that we had at the very end, at 1:00 in the morning, so that was...
I would say, as a general rule, and I violate this all the time in my personal work, but, you know, you're supposed to do the hard stuff first, but there's a tendency, a human tendency, to do all the easy stuff first. But when we've got the audience out there, I think generally what we ought to do is take care of the largest number of attendees first and their concerns, and then just kind of grind through it. So that'd be kind of my approach to this.
And we can certainly, one thing I hadn't thought of till now, but you can, if you see a large turnout, I mean, we have moved items around in the agenda that time of, not ideal all the time, but it is possible, we have a lot of people show up for something, moving, you know, just recently did at the law board, moving an agenda item down or up, so. Any other comments on that?
Just other than I don't think we've ever been stormed by anyone.
As of yet.
No, I don't think so.
So this kind of plays into each other. This is, so we're kind of talking about meeting procedure, this is public comment policy. So right now, we have public comment first meeting of the month. The way this draft policy resolution is written is, we would allow public comment at both meetings. So instead of having it just at the first, it would be the first and the third. And obviously, we have comment on every agenda item. We would require sign up in advance, you know, that could mean sign up at the meeting. You come there and sign up, except for public hearings. We don't allow repeat speakers, we've had that in the past. And right now, the way it's written in the policy is five speakers per item, five minutes per speaker, so you're talking about 25 minutes of public comment. So the first and the third meeting, you would have 25 minutes of public comment at the start of the meeting. So the first and the third meeting, you would have twenty-five minutes of public comment at the start of the meeting. Sometimes, sometimes we don't get any public comment, um, you know, like today. Sometimes we get quite a bit of public comment, but for this section, that would limit it to five minutes, five, five speakers.
Is there another slide after this?
There is one on just decorum, what we've talked about. So that's more about, you know, same, those rules, a lot of those rules did change, name, address, organization, one at a time. If we have written documents, you know, we have had people come up here that read their doctoral dissertation. And we try to limit some of that, where they would hand it to us. Or if they have something, electronic files, send it to us. Right now it says Thursday, I think that's flexible, could be Monday or Tuesday. I mean, it doesn't have to be that early prior to the meeting. Just something where we can make sure the files are gonna work on our computer. A lot of times we get up here and plug it in and we don't know what we're opening, so make sure that it's okay.
I have a problem, our meetings are on Tuesday nights. And the agenda is not made public until Friday at three. So how can the person provide the electronic file to the city by Thursday before?
So I, I, I just commented, mayor, we, I mean, we could adjust that, it doesn't have to be Thursday, could be Monday. I, I think we just need it before the city commission meeting, so we can come in here, work with our computer system to get it on.
Just have somebody test it out. Just test it out, is all you're saying, okay.
We could, we, I, we could adjust that to my day, or, or, you know, even Tuesday morning-ish, work with the city clerk, Gary, and, and make sure that we're getting something that's gonna work here.
Could you go back to the other slide?
One of the reasons, so one of the reasons, I think, and Katie, you can comment here, that we did talk about Thursday, was the intent possibly for including some of that in the packet? So, if they had something they wanted to include in the packet to go out to the public.
So they've been you ahead of time. So, about this slide, uh, so just going, just to keep my thoughts somewhat organized. I'm okay with one, two, uh, three. I'm not okay with four. I don't think we should have a limit to how many people speak. Limit of five speakers per item. I don't know where we picked five from, but I don't think we should have a, a limit. Uh, I've always felt if somebody shows up to speak, that takes a lot of courage in and of itself, to be on TV and to know that the media's here and they have to speak to all of us. It's hard to know, uh, if they have an, we're almost thinking that people talk to each other. They may not have talked to each other, and people from a variety of organizations or neighborhoods may felt some, uh, passion about a certain issue and show up, and without even knowing, we have a room full of fifty people. Um, that's not to say they were all organized and were only gonna listen to five of them. I don't think that's fair when they came with prepar, prepared remarks or have a certain concern and they want their voice to be heard. So I don't wanna have a limit on number of people speaking. I'm okay with the five minutes, even that, I'm not comfortable with, because I know some people, uh, take a longer time. I don't want forty-five minutes for sure, uh, and I think three minutes is too short. But five minutes is somewhat reasonable. But last night I was listening to the planning board meeting, and one of the gentlemen spoke, and it took almost ten minutes, but there was a lot of information in that ten minutes to speak. So five minutes is okay, but I'm not okay with number, number four. I don't think we should have a limit on number of people speaking, even if they're all saying the same thing. Mainly because this is their chance, this is their government, this is their time to speak.
I a hundred percent agree with the limit on number of speakers. I've, I've been on the other side of that, where I've been on, in a public meeting that limited the number of speakers that showed up. And what I saw it do was disenfranchise an entire group of people. It particularly was about a women's health issue, and the six speakers were all men. And no woman got a chance to speak about an item that directly affected women's health, right? Um, and I, I would agree, if, if you, I, I wanna limit on the time that they speak, and I think five minutes is a reasonable amount of time. But if you're willing to show up in the meeting and passionate enough to get in front of a group of people to speak about it, then that's what we signed up for. And again, it goes back to the whole, if you wanna address all of us at the same time, the only opportunity that you have to do it, because all of us aren't allowed to be together in other settings, is at a public meeting. Um, so I don't really like the number of speakers, um, limiting that on either public comment or the items. If you show up and you have something to say, we'll put a time limit on you, but stand up and speak. The sign-up, the only, if, if we do the sign-up like as they're walking in, or that night, and maybe that would help us better record who is speaking, their names and addresses, as well as, we could save time by, one of the things that we do now, right, when we have public comment, is after everybody's done speaking, the mayor asks who, like, who else has public comment? Then everybody spends about thirty seconds looking at each other, and someone gets up. And you have a lot of people here, that thirty seconds probably adds up to a bit of time. So if we had a sign-up sheet or sign-in sheets when people walked in, it might allow the city clerk to process that a little bit faster, like, Andy, you're the next speaker on this item.
Yeah, he would, he would call, call them out.
Exactly, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't necessarily want the sign-up, us to put in a policy that said you have to be signed up the day before, just because if you're not paying attention to when the agenda comes out, and maybe you're just reading the Mercury, the Mercury doesn't tend to cover what we're gonna cover in city commissioning meetings until the meet, the day before. It's reasonable, the news cycle. So that's when most people find out what we're talking about, not when the agenda's released. So, I would hate to see us put a limit on the number of speakers, and I would be fine with the sign-in as long as it was done, it was allowed to be done as the pe, uh, person walks in. And if we could use that in a way to, you, you know, help procedurally move the meeting along and call up the next speaker, I'd like to see that, too.
I totally miss the advance, uh, sign-up in advance required. I, I don't think that's appropriate to have for a city commission meeting. We've had a meeting here when we talked about the Non-Discrimination Act. We had a young man in his teens come at ten o'clock at night because he was watching us. I think that's still, I, I like that kind of dialogue, that it prompted somebody to show up. Now, if he comes here and signs up, I think I'm okay, but I don't know what the word advanced means. I think if they're here and they feel like, oh, somebody said something, oh, I need to say something. And I've done that before at plenty of meetings, where I thought, I, I didn't mean to come up and speak, but I think I will. I think that should be permitted. I think, um, we love it when we have people here. This is not good, you know, so we, we wanna encourage people to have a dialogue. I've gone to meetings before, it was no intention of speaking, and ended up having something that I felt like hadn't been said, that I wanted to say. The word advanced, true, is, I, I perceive that as your, this, your administration's interest in providing the city clerk with the person's name spelled right and their address. And when people get up there and say, ah, I don't even know what to call him, Mister what? Because I couldn't, uh, pick up the, the name correctly, so I wouldn't even begin to try to pronounce it. But I do think that we want to enable the city clerk to be able to, uh, have effective minutes. And we certainly want that. I don't know, uh, how to accomplish that. We might need to re, to change something in the setup here somehow. But I, I don't, I think they should sign in, and we have examples. We've, we used to have a sign-up sheet at the podium, and I haven't seen that for some time. We could reinstitute that. Uh, or maybe, uh, sign up and sit over here somewhere, I don't know. I don't wanna segregate people either, but I just, I do wanna look after our city clerk's needs. So, anyway, that's, that's where I'm.
That's where I think we would try and at least have, I guess the intent was at least have, if not beforehand, have them sign up at the meeting if they're gonna speak. So we have their name and their address. USD three-eighty-three, I think, does the same thing, they have them sign up. So, something similar to that. I guess one of my questions for those, you know, Commissioner Ready, Commissioner McKee, do you have a timeframe at all you feel on a limit at all for a number of, an hour? Or, I guess, I guess what I'm thinking of, you're, you've talked about wanting commissioner discussion. We're trying to balance commissioner discussion and public comment. So, I mean, I don't know if those two, if, if we just don't wanna limit it at all?
No, I don't wanna have a limit, because we have plenty of time to look over these things. Our public doesn't. We are actually at an advantage in any scenario. Even if they spoke for four hours, we would still be at an advantage. Because we are emailing, uh, at least our, our city manager, we're emailing in our city staff, maybe we're having community discussions with other people. Uh, the community members that come here don't, are not at the same advantage that we are at. We get a packet, we read it, we ask questions. Um, we have, uh, that's what we signed up for. And the public will never have the same advantage as we do in some of these discussions. So no, I am not for any type of limit as to the number of speakers.
Same, I'm not for a limit either. To me, it just, there is already a trust issue with government that's growing, right? And we have a public meeting with a room full of people, and we tell half of that room, I, we just witnessed it with other bodies. We tell half of that room, sorry, you're not allowed to speak on this comment because of policy procedures that we put in place. Do you think that that person's gonna come and weigh in on a public discussion again? No, and that's exactly what we're trying to prevent. If, I, I know there's time limits that we're trying to set in, and we're trying to be cognizant of our time, but for me, the dialogue, the direct dialogue, that we are privileged to have as a city government is something that is valuable and something that we should cherish. And so, the, the, if you're, if you feel passionate enough that you wanna speak directly to your elected officials at a public meeting, and you show up to the meeting, and you fill out the little paperwork before you do, I don't care if there's thirty people here or if there's one pe, person here, if you have something to say, they should be able to have the opportunity to say it in a public setting.
And I agree about not limiting the number of speakers. I am appalled at the way our legislature treats our citizens. By shutting, allowing one, one lobbyist to speak and nobody else, or not allowing no public uh, hearing or public comments. And so I don't wanna go in that direction. I think there is a practical need, uh, with regard to the, sometimes the length of time a speaker has. But not with regard, I don't wanna limit it to five speakers. If there are ten there, I, I am inclined to wanna hear them.
So, one, one of the things that you said, Commissioner McKee, that, that I think kinda framed our issues, I'm jumping ahead a little bit, because to me, there's a, there's a, there's the topic of open public comment. And then there's the topic of public comment on official things that everybody knows is on the agenda. To me, there's a big difference there, because you may have a group that decides to swarm in open public comment, and nobody else knows that that's gonna be discussed that night. And they dominate three hours of your meeting that night, and nobody else who may disagree with that topic knew you were gonna be talking about that item. And so, is there a difference between those two? And, and if, if, if you get to an hour, you say, hey, you know, there's others that wanna speak to this, we're gonna schedule a special meeting, so everybody knows we're gonna be talking about this topic?
Yeah, I mean, I can, I can understand that. I guess my hesitation would be, um, and this is a terrible example to use, but it's the best example I can think of, is before those meetings, we don't always know what's gonna happen in the public over the weekend or on a Monday, right? God forbid we have a police shooting here. Uh, you can look at what's happened with some of the other cities, where the public does come and flood their city meetings. And rightfully so. And I would never, ever want to limit that public discourse that happened with an event that we did not plan, that, and did not foresee happening, and then limit public feedback on that. That, again, to me, is what, why I ran and why I'm here and do what I do. So, to me, again, if you show up at the meeting and you have something to say, it is totally reasonable that we set a timeframe around that conversation, or how, how much one individual can speak. But even aside from just the agenda items, there are things that are going to happen in our community that we will not be able to foresee. And those will actually probably be more tenuous and more important that we listen to public comment when they flood us. And so, I don't think someone's, I, I, and I could be wrong. I don't think an organization is just gonna flood us for a night for the purpose of flooding us on a non-contingent issue.
Can I, can I?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I was gonna say, I, it might happen, I, but I, I haven't seen it happen at least in the five years that I've been here. But I don't want us to, uh, be preemptive in that area. I mean, what are we afraid of? Uh, because we, we, we always, we already wrote down that we are not going to have a discussion with the public comment at any kind. We can ask questions, but we're not going to have a dialogue. I think it's acceptable for us to listen. I'm not saying we're gonna be responding, but.
We have a practical legal issue. It, so Ron's right, the cities tend to divide and perhaps treat open public comment differently than an agenda item comment. We haven't found a city that doesn't limit the time of overall open public comment. Some of them have, they don't limit the total time of agenda item comment, because they want people to show up and comment on city business. The reason that they limit open public comment is because you have published the meeting time and when that business will occur, and you've published public hearings. And it, it is happening in other cities in this state, and we've spoken to those cities, where they're not able to have the public, if you allow a swarm of two hundred people and they can speak five minutes each, or even thirty people, we don't get to do the public hearing when we've told everyone that we can do it, and we don't have the business when we've, on the night, we don't have the time then left. So we need a solution to that. And that's why some cities have moved open public comment to the end of the meeting, so that they're sure that they get the business done. And they've also had issues with people, you know, using open public comment outside the scope of city business, you know, to advertise or other things. So we, we do need to, we need some guidance on that. Because if I hear that you would accommodate a swarm of open public comment that's not on business items, we haven't gotten our business done according to our legal notices. And so we need, we need a solution to that. And that's why every city that we've spoken to, they limit the, and I'm only talking about open public comment, not agenda item, that's different.
So I'm talking, if, if it's, so, if you, if we, I mean, the mayor can always ask at the beginning, are you here to speak, uh, for open, public comment for items that are not on the agenda? And if plenty of hands raised up, then we can obviously change our order at some point.
Well, that's where you run into the problem where you're making a, a topic-based rule that you're not applying. If the week before, you didn't say only, you're only gonna have an hour of public comment because there weren't that many people, then the next week, they're gonna say, well, you're limiting our comment on this subject because there's so many of us. You end up with a viewpoint-based rule, that's why the rules are there.
We'll have to think of something, but I'm not for limiting it.
I, I think that, you know, on your open public comment, there's, there's a couple of things here, cause it's all driven by time, and you put five there, you know, number you pulled out of there. I might just change it to ten, because that would be roughly an hour, which would keep us before midnight. And I've never seen a real mass of people, more than ten, come for open public in six years that I've been here. The agenda items has been, has been, you know, different on there. And so that might be how I would handle that. You know, on the agenda items, the other thing, you know, you, you talked about what does advanced mean? To me, that's before the meeting starts. And then that would give Gary, you know, a list, you could have a form, the person writes what it is, key topics they wanna discuss, and maybe that form could include pro and con. And then the city clerk could, you know, have a pro person and a con person, and we could rotate. And, and then after a while, some people might decide, well, what I wanted to say was already been said, and, and they won't, they won't speak, because it's already been covered. Cause the problem's been, you know, we've heard the same thing ten times in a row. On those nights we were here till, you know, one and two o'clock in the morning. And so I don't have a problem with advanced, but just define it as before the meeting, and then it gives Gary the ability and maybe more work to sit there and try to mediate that. And I saw the school board do that quite effectively. Couple of school board meetings I went to years ago, I thought they did a pretty good job of that. Cause they put it all together, and then they, you know, they, they had people rotate. And, and then some people decided then not to talk, because their point had already been better said by someone else. And, and, and that will help you to, uh, control the meeting. The, the other interesting thing is, I think it's a, it's a solid point, that, you know, we publish this stuff for the public on Friday, and we've seen it days in advance. And I assume the reason for that is the, the content of the memos and everything is published. And people can see that. So is it possible, too much earlier, just publish the skeleton like we've got here? So that they know the topic is there, but you don't get all the memos and details? Because I realize you can't publish those in advance, that gives people a little bit more warning. Is that feasible?
Sure, we could, we could publish the, just the agenda that comes to you when we send it to you, on Thursday.
Yes. And, and if we could get that out earlier, at least that's a heads up that it's on there. Now, of course, they won't have the meat of it and the details, that, that still won't come out till Friday, but at least they'll have, they'll, they'll have the, the topics as early as we get the topics.
The, um, here's what I would like to see us do. Go ahead and have people sign up. And that means that they get to speak first, that's the advantage. But for those who are in the audience and, and something dawns on them or they have a comment based on something that's already been said, let them go ahead and speak. Uh, and I, I would just say, let's start with. And I, I would just say, let's start with, with what's, I think, been said here already, which on the third bullet, let's not have anybody exempted. In other words, let's let everybody speak. Run this thing for six months or a year, see what happens, we can always go back and revisit it. But I, it's probably better to start with a wider aperture and then narrow it if we need to. But I think, from the standpoint of openness and fairness, we probably ought to start wide.
May I suggest if we, that's perfectly fine, we can look at that. If we are gonna go back to not limiting the number of speakers, that we go back to open public comment at just the first meeting of the month versus every meeting? Because right now, we only do the first meeting of the month.
Yeah, I think that, I'm comfortable with that and I think that's what the public expects too.
And that's what we do now. If, if it's what we do now, then I'm, I can support that.
I think that really touches on, you know, decorum.
We haven't settled the advance, the, the definition of advance, really, in my mind.
We could define, but we could sign up at the meeting, we could define that, Linda.
Prior to, okay, as long as we...
Well, I said USD 383, they puts it by the door. If you want to speak, you come and sign up at the door. Gary, our city clerk takes the list, goes and reads the names off the list and, and calls them up. And if somebody, we get, and I guess if we want to have someone who says, "Well, you know, something's come to me and they haven't spoke yet," they could come forward and we could have them, I, I think that would be acceptable.
Correct, Katie.
You know, I also like the idea of, still, of making the announcement that if you have, if, to the public saying, "If you have a point, like the, at, at, when it starts getting late, if you have a point that hasn't been made otherwise yet this evening, please, you know, you're welcome to speak to it." But I, I'm not real, you know, I agree with not just sitting and listening to a series of redundant statements that just repeat and repeat and repeat, I think.
Yeah, I think unfortunately, we're not gonna be able to limit that, Mayor. If we don't, if we don't limit the number, we'll have to listen to those redundancies, but only five minutes at a time at least, so.
It's always, always helpful to say it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Enforcement will not be very successful, but I think you're right. I think if we say it, then if people say, "Well..."
I, I think part of the issue legally, you know, we shouldn't, we shouldn't limit.
We can encourage them if they'd like to, they can, but it's their choice.
No, I, I think that is, that undermines the, the point that we're not making a viewpoint-based directive. I mean, the, the point of public comment from a First Amendment perspective is that you allow people to speak, but you're not regulating their viewpoint. If they want to echo what everyone says before them and we allow it, we can't tell, "Well, number two, because you got here later or you signed up later, you no longer get to speak to the things you wanted to speak about." That is the essence of a viewpoint-based rule. I know we say it and people are respectful of it because they understand the, you know, efficiency. And I know that other bodies even have that in their policies. But I, I don't think it's, it would withstand a challenge to suggest to someone, "Because so-and-so got up before you, now you can't say the same thing." And, and I think it can be hard to discern when that, there's someone's violating that rule. How do you know, I mean, we don't want to be up here saying, "Well, we've already heard that, so you have to stop." And, and that becomes a viewpoint judgment and, and I don't think we should suggest it. I don't think we should recommend it. I think that we control the efficiency by the time limit and allow people their opportunity to speak to the subjects that we've invited them to speak on.
Good point.
Yeah.
I do think if someone comes late, they, they don't know what was addressed before.
On one of those, you know, hopefully, we won't have any more nights like that, but I can remember probably four occasions where we had like a hundred people that want to speak. Can you change the time limit on those nights? Because otherwise, you're not gonna make it by midnight.
That, that was the concern that I was expressing before is that you, you won't, you simply won't get your business done if you're, by midnight, if you allow it without a cap. There are a couple of cities that we found that said, they have a rule and they say that it's five minutes, but if the number of speakers will exceed, you know, would exceed the time allotted for the meeting, which in our case would be an end date of mid, or end time of midnight, then that they can, they can restrict, reduce the number of minutes, so from five to say three, in order to allow everyone a chance to speak. But that rule has to then be evenly and fairly applied. So, then everyone gets three, so, and that would be acceptable. So, there are a couple of cities that do, do that. They'll say, "If we have a very large number," like in their policy, their policy says, "If a very large number turn out, we can reduce the minutes to be fairly applied across the board." So, so we could add that to it.
I think we should consider that.
Okay.
Because I, I, you know, I think, I think that's, that, that's important. If you get a hundred, a hundred fifty people, it's just, it's just not manageable.
When there was a hundred people here, were they, were they waiting to comment on an item on the agenda? Or was it a general public comment? Because what I'm hearing from you is more of your concern is about the general public comments that don't fall under business.
Well, the way that we have our current agenda structured, since we have the open public comment at the beginning and we have had folks show up and they've taken more, you know, an hour or more, the problem is, and those items that they're talking about aren't city business are on the nights. So, no one knows that they're being discussed. Problem is, you don't have an opportunity to get to your business. And so, that's, so when you have an unlimited open public comment, you don't get to the published business. On the, on the agenda item side, I mean, we've had long, long comments there, but it is on the business of the, that's been published.
Would it be an option, because I don't want to limit public comment on an item or before the meeting. I just, it doesn't sit right with me and I don't want to do it. But I do understand your concern. So, would there be an option to maybe the public comment of non-business items that happens at the start of the meeting is limited to three minutes per individual? And then on the general items that are business, you have five minutes. Could we do something like that?
Yes.
To me, that would maybe mitigate that problem a little bit, but still allow open con, an unlimited amount of speakers that show up.
The other thing Kyle touched on a little bit that we found that other cities did, i- i- in the interest of maximizing engagement and getting that, but, but organizing it in a way that can be digested, is they have like a town hall once a quarter. Instead of having general agenda, for example, they'll have a town hall as their meeting. Or, you know, whatever their different approaches are. Or they'll have, like Kyle mentioned, they have town halls on an issue or they'll have an open meeting on an issue. So, it, it does facilitate that, but it puts it in a forum where you have that sort of discussion and exchange rather than on a business night. And that's, so it's not, that is an alternative, would be to structure it that way.
I like that idea.
Instead of not knowing what's occurring and perhaps you don't get to your business that night. The current is, the concern is the protection of the published business.
I would be open to hearing more information about things like that.
I think the other thing that we could do is if, I mean, obviously, there are some things like you mentioned that if there was an event and, and issues became of that event, so you could predict there would be a large number that potentially would be at your meeting, you might agree that if you were gonna have a town hall meeting at four, for those that are, or five or whatever, you know, forego our briefing or something or the day before even. So, I mean, you could kind of cut that sum off at, at that versus coming to the scheduled meeting, we'll hold a special meeting for them.
One other question I have about all of this is, how do we enforce it? So, I mean, the mayor can say, "Your pastor allotted time." But if the speaker keeps speaking, how do we enforce that? Or if the public, when we talk about decorum, if the public starts getting riled up and has, is shouting, like, how do we enforce these policy standards?
I, I think there's gonna have to be a balance between, I think for the ti, for the timeframes, like for five minutes, I, I mean, I think we would look at some type of clock or countdown that would just go down to zero so people would know. I think there's people that are resisting. There's certain, and Katie and I have talked about it a little bit, there's certain situations where we're a little bit at the disadvantage of the city. Most cities use their law enforcement to enforce their rules within the policy. RCPD is obviously not a part, they've joined our meetings when we've had controversial topics, excuse me. And I, I think they're, and, and I've talked to them and they're, they're more than willing when we have items come up to come here and attend and be a part of it. But, you know, we haven't, we have to give that some more thought as far as staff, you know, talking to them, taking away. There has to be some decorum from the elected officials probably that'll, you know, that there is some self-enforcement when we talk to other cities where the mayor tries to take control. But, you know, if somebody is being disorderly to the point where we need to call the police, then, you know, that's gonna possibly be an option. And there's times when you call the police that, and if there's something going on like that, that tends to make the situation worse.
Yeah, I just, my only thoughts is, we're, we have kind of a, we have rules, us kind of open rules, but we're still, we're a pretty open environment right now.
Sure.
Changing to something like this, just at the beginning, especially at the beginning, making sure we had a mechanism to enforce it.
Sure.
I think the only tools the mayor has is the ability to turn off the volume or turn off the sound, gavel, and the ability to adjourn the meeting if it became necessary. And so, those are the only tools I can really think of.
Got it, okay, no, that makes sense, thank you.
On this, what I'd propose on that limit thing is, at the beginning of the meeting, the mayor just say, "Based upon the number of attendees, the minutes per speaker will be X."
Yeah, if we have a lot of people, we can, yeah, we'll write that in the policy where it could be reduced.
I don't, I would not want to put the public comments at the end of the meeting. I think it denigrates the importance of the public input and the public feels it. And I, so that, you, you were asking for our opinions on different elements, so that would be, I couldn't speak to that one sooner.
Relative to that, do you, would you be okay if the policy was general enough that we would have, we would have open public comments at least once a month? Which if, you know, so sometimes we get planning board items that, that just hit the calendar. I mean, there are, there are items that just hit, you know, and so, if it was the first meeting of the month and there were two things that came from the planning board that are ripe for discussion, moving public comments to the next meeting?
No, I'm not for, you, you know, we're, we're anti, our, our government has run rather well so far. The reason we're doing this is because we don't have anything. So, we're trying to find something and do something that's appropriate. But we've run a pretty decent meetings up until, for, for as long as I remember and certainly for the five years I've been on, on board here and when I've been here longer. It hasn't been that disruptive. We've had law enforcement here a few times and even then, it was pretty mild. I think we have a pretty respectful community. As far as having, you know, more agenda items and we might have a long, you know, public comment time, I think we've addressed those pretty well too. And now, if we have a limit where it's gonna end by midnight, I think that gives us some time to table something and move it to another meeting. If, we should never feel like we have to be in an urgent situation because we have to make decisions quickly. I, I, I haven't felt that sense of urgency in the time that I've been here. And we've had long discussions. I was here even when you all were discussing the social services budget and that went till two thirty or three in the morning. I, 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 I don't want us to be so much so that we're just putting in rules just because of all the mites that might happen. I understand why we might want to do that, but I, I think having a mid, midnight, I mean, by midnight, we'll have most things resolved or tabled or moved or condensed the number of minutes they're speaking, something.
I agree. I think we need a policy that solves for the eighty percent and then just live with the fact that the twenty percent's gonna happen sometimes. And if we need to make an adjustment after that twenty percent happens, then we can. But I, I, I would, yeah, I don't want us to put in restrictions because of things that might happen. What can we do that helps streamline our meetings a little bit? That's gonna work eighty, ninety percent of the time and then live with the other ten percent of the time that it doesn't always work out the way that we hoped it did.
And that's pretty much the same thing.
What Ron's getting at there though is, is like a special case of, you know, the planning board throws something, it's got a timeline and we have to put it on the first meeting of the month. And if that happens, then he should have the ability to move the, you know, open thing to the second meeting. That, that's all, that, that's all, that'll happen, you know, maybe once in a year. But when you write your policy, just put that flexibility in there. And generally, most of the time, probably ninety-eight percent of the time, there'll be public comment on the first meeting of the month. But in that rare case, you see, and if our policy forbids that, then we're sort of goofed up. So, I'm, I'm for, you know, putting the flexibility in there and, and understanding that we're not gonna have that happen very regular. It's gonna be if, if one of those, you know, perfect storms comes to pass where, where, where things just happen like that. And there is actually a sense of urgency and a timeline and it's bad to table it. And there have been a few things like that that have come up. So, I, I think that's where you were going.
I, I think we could write in a way, you should too, and, and Ron, you can weigh in, but just say that, you know, open public comment would be on the first meeting of the month unless special circumstances deem it, you know, we would notify the public that it'll be on the second meeting this time, you know, the...
About public comment on the general agenda items that we would have to decide, just public.
Open, open public, open public comment.
I've never been here where we've had one hour of open public comment or even maybe thirty minutes, but never an hour. No, I'm not saying... Eliminate it at all, I, I am not saying that, what I'm saying is...
But I, but I, I just wanted, there are topics that all five of you aren't going to want to sit there and listen to for thirty minutes and you can't stop them. And I think that's what we're trying to tell you. If you put rules in place, and you're right, we don't get a long public comment period, so put an hour limit on it. If somebody's up there and saying things that you don't want to hear, at least you have an hour and you can tell them, "You're done, we're moving on with business." If it's a topic so offensive to all of you and we just have to sit there and endure, it, and I'm not talking about topics you even agree with, I'm sorry. All five of you may not agree with anything coming out of somebody's mouth and you have no ability to stop them. You can't tell them to sit down, you can't tell them to be quiet because you don't tell anybody else to. But that public comment period at the beginning of a meeting, which we haven't seen really go over thirty minutes, forty-five minutes, put a cap on it. Just put a cap on it.
I'm not gonna put a cap on it, we can do it maybe three minutes. Just because I don't want to hear somebody say something and it might irritate me and I'm annoyed, doesn't give me the right to say, "I'm done listening to you."
It's a cap on the entire period of time, not on the person, on the entire period of time.
I think, I think, Jason, I appreciate that, but I think we've already agreed that we're not gonna do that. So, let's move on to the, can we move on to the next slide?
Can I ask a question, just since I'll be making the changes? Back on the issue of whether open public comment can be at one meeting a month instead of at the first? I mean, that, that gives you flexibility in the positive as well because if an issue arises...
Kyle already gave us a statement. He said it shall be on the first meeting of every month unless there are unusual circumstances.
Right.
And we are, we, a number of us...
So, you want the default to be that? I was saying, just to go back to one meeting a month so that there had, okay.
Which is one a meet, one meeting a month, we have public comments, first meeting, yeah.
But you want the unless, uh, special circumstances at the city manager's discretion?
No, I don't.
Well, see, that's, so let me, let me explain two things. First of all, as Ron said, if you say it's on the first meeting of the month, your open public comment and your big issue arises in week three, he can't put it on the agenda for you. You can't have an open public comment till a month, you know, three weeks later. The flexibility that Commissioner Butler was suggesting works for the public as well because it allows Ron to look at something that's coming up and say, "We want to have open public co," or "We can add an open public comment." It's not there rather than wait a month, so...
The open public comment is not on the agenda items that are gonna be presented.
Correct, which means you were talking about trying to address some issue that happens that's, that's blown up, that's not on our agenda. We are, what we're saying is, to the public is, you come the first week of the month and then if you miss that, you have to wait three weeks for the next time to talk. Right, well, I was wondering if you wanted to give them the flexibility to add it?
The only re, the only reason that I, I said, I had just a hesitation with that isn't necessarily having the clause in there that unless unusual circumstances happen, my, would be the approval process. So, first, how do we call, and this is maybe just my lack of understanding, how do we call a special meeting? And if we were gonna close public comment and move public comment, I think that that should be a commission decision. Not, and, nothing against you, Ron, but I just think if there is a, if an issue pops up that again, they're gonna be looking at the five of us. And so, if we had to make a decision to move public comment, I want that decision to rest and fall on the five of us and not Ron. And so, I would be fine including that circumstance in it as long as it was the commission's decision to si, decide that we move public comment to a later meeting.
There wouldn't perhaps be an opportunity for you to do that.
I'm not sure, I understand, I thought we're doing, we're keeping it the way it is right now. We're having public comment at the first meeting, right?
I think you've clarified it for me, thank you.
So, in summary.
You think?
I think I could summarize it here. So, open public comment for first legislative meeting, five-minute limit per speaker, open public comment, no limit on speakers, five minutes per speaker on agenda item. public comment, no limit on speakers, five minutes per speaker on agenda item, comment, no limit on speakers. I think that about summarizes our timeframe, is that correct, accurate? And we will have public hearings after consent before, before general. Got it? And then the midnight...
The only discrepancy was, I thought I heard, on open public comment, at the beginning of the meeting, on the first meeting of the month, it's three minutes per person. So we're going to...
Write, write it out so we have the ability to lower the time. Don't go past midnight, and then work sessions, is it midnight, is it 10? Seven to five hours is midnight, we start at 5:30, 10:30. Ron will be buying me dinner at that point, so...
I'm perfectly comfortable making it midnight for...
Midnight for both?
Period. And, but then we, we keep with the published dates that we say we're going to have a, a public meeting, and our city commission meeting. I don't think we will ever go to midnight on a work session, but if we just say midnight, we're covered.
How long this meeting is taking us? Because we, we need to hear each other talk, and we need to hear from Katie, we need to hear all of this. And my fear is, if we limit it just to 7:30, we're going to be backed up on items that we need to discuss. Where are you going to put all of that? I mean, there have been days where we've had four agenda items, because we weren't going to meet a certain week or something like that.
Sure.
I mean, I, I, I think that's...
I think, I think that was kind of the intent of limiting some of that, to have town hall forums and other things, so we can get through, because we do, we stack up on our business items where, you know, Ron plays a balancing game of trying to get through, what can we put on consent, or general, you know, and there's items we move on consent to general. So I think that was part of the purpose of the whole discussion, was trying to balance that with the public comment portion, and that, that was just part of the discussion.
Talking about the hours, I think I'm okay with midnight and maybe going to 10:30 on a work session, or midnight even on work session. That's the only comment I was trying to make. I think we've discussed this thoroughly.
The last two, these two slides are more about decorum in the policy itself. The only thing really highlighting here is, we, we have multiple times allowed multiple speakers at the podium. Majority of cities do not allow that, one speaker at the podium at a time. And then...
The last time it was the developer and the real estate person, and it's part of that presentation.
Sure.
There are not many, there aren't many instances of multiple people, I mean, unless we, I remember me calling one up, as, to, to come and answer a question, so there were two, but I'm just saying, it doesn't happen a lot, and if we're more conscious, then we, the mayor can manage that better too, you know, knowing that we have that interest.
So, Katie, if we, for a presentation of an agenda item, we would still limit that to one at, at the podium at a time, or is that part of this policy? I guess that's not really part of public comment.
I mean, the point is to have one speaker, so that the clerk and the minutes, you have one person, and one person signed up, so, or, one person has risen to speak, so it allows that person their opportunity to speak in their five minutes. So, in the example that you gave where there might be multiple, they, on a presentation, they can sit and they can switch places. But, but, yeah, I mean, the, the point is to make it so that the person who has the right to speak has their opportunity to speak.
And that was at their, at their initiative, versus the commission, a, a city commissioner asking a question of someone who has spoken, or asked a follow-up question later, which is different, I think.
And I think what, in these, on this public comment part, you certainly don't want 50 people to come up and stand there with one person speaking. I mean, this is all about kind of decorum stuff, so...
Correct.
I, I can't remember, I mean, in the presentations, in the, in the general agenda, certainly, then people come up two at a time, because one's a developer and one's the owner or something, so...
That's what I was trying...
Or one's the city staff. But, other than that, on this public comment, I think, sounds fine to me.
Kind of adding on to that, we've kind of talked about...
Wait a minute, is this the same slide?
No, well, it's both on decorum, it's a different slide. So, when you're addressing the body as a whole, individual members, we kind of talked about that. Relating, occasionally we have someone that doesn't really relate to that item that gets up to speak, and then trying to limit debates between audience members, the person at the podium. And also, when we close public comment, close public, close public comment, so... So, response to public comment, this is something that Katie, you might have to weigh in for me, but really...
Kyle, can we comment on the decorum before you go on?
Is there a certain piece? Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm okay with these five bullet points, the previous slide.
This one?
Yes.
Sure.
Speaker, the third bullet, speaker may not read written document of another person, but may give it to the city clerk to give to city commission. I, I don't mind if they give it to the city commission, but I think it's okay if they read a written document from another person, if you're talking about an organization and they have one speaker on speaking, either on their, or, somebody else wrote it, because they're not great at, you know, or, but somebody else can articulate it better. I don't see why that's key, that they don't read somebody else, another person's document. Why is that, why is that an issue?
Well, part of it...
Maybe there's a better way to write it, that, that's not conveying what is getting out, but if, if you're reading like an article written by somebody else, that's not your words or your testimony, but, but if you write...
Like to make it a point of a research or something, is that what you're saying?
Well, if, right, I mean, instead of, instead of someone standing up there and reading an article, a legal article, they submit it, we still want to receive it, but it's not their comments, they're reading from someone else's testimony. Your example wouldn't be prohibited by this.
Okay, then that needs to be written differently.
Yeah, it's, I mean, if someone's representing a group, and they're reading a statement for the group, that's not what this is getting at. This is getting at a scenario where someone stands up and says, I'm speaking for so-and-so.
But what you've got to do is redo that, so basically, if, you know, if I say, hey, I'm Win Butler, I'm representing Winsong Homeowners Association, and here's a statement I want to read, that's okay.
That's okay.
But I shouldn't stand up and say, the Winsong Homeowners Association would like to read you a New York Times article written by this guy.
Yes.
Because that's totally irrelevant to what goes on here, and that's what your intent is.
Yes, and we can clarify that, sure.
Anything else that you should? I'm not sure, yeah, this thing...
Or something, I'm not sure, okay, overhead.
So in response to public, public comment, obviously the purpose of that is to, to receive input. I think the way that this draft policy describes it is that, you know, the commission doesn't, doesn't need to answer questions or comments concerned, they can, they can address, they can talk about at the end, addressing that issue at a future meeting, or referring that issue to the city manager, city administration. You know, they can't post questions to staff. I think some of that happens now already, you know, we get through something and there's, there's a question, so staff has asked things, request clarifications based on what that, that person's input was. Really, really, it's about not creating the dialogue at the podium, where it becomes just a back-and-forth discussion, when really they're providing input for you to receive, and then if there's, needs to be clarification sought, we can, we can seek that. Does that make sense to everybody?
The only question that I have, I don't have a problem with any of it, but the, just one thing that's come up a few times, and I could see it happening in public comment, so let's say, three or four people come here, and they pick a topic that they all are having the same public, like, general public comment on, right? And they want the city to talk about it, or address the issue at some point. Because we're not responding to them at all, what, the end of that general public comment, we just go to commissioner comment, so we could all five talk about something totally different, and not even acknowledge anything that they said. But one of the, the question I get most often from people is, they don't understand how something ends up on a commission agenda. And so, they, they don't understand how that process works, and, and, and in some ways, a lot of it would be, and to correct me if I'm wrong here, someone came up for a public comment, let's say about, I don't know, banning plastic in Manhattan. For that to be on the general agenda, or an agenda item at the next point, the commission would discuss it at a briefing session, correct? Is there, is there like a more transparent way, or a better way that we can demonstrate it? Because I don't think that people realize what briefing sessions are, and the importance of briefing sessions. I don't, I don't think that people understand that. So, I think that when people come up and give public comments, or send us emails, and we don't respond at all, then they just kind of feel like we're dodging and ignoring it, and they never realize that we spoke about it at a briefing session, or something, something was done about it. I, I, again, I've only been on the commission for four months, but I can think of two or three different issues that that's happened on. So is there like a more transparent way that we can demonstrate that? That the commission will discuss this at some point, whether it be in a briefing session or a general agenda item, like, this will be a topic that...
I, I think, Ron, you go ahead.
So whether, you know, and, you know, generally briefing is part of that communication about, about the agenda, but, I mean, we could have potentially a discussion of future agenda items appear on, on the agenda, so that, you know, necessarily that you vote on it, because you don't vote on it in briefing, but, you know, it's one of those things where the, the way our former government is set up is that you don't have individuals controlling the, the, the agenda, you know? This is kind of the difference between what we have in this former government with the RCPD budget, where the individuals on that board vote to approve the agenda. That is the very first item, and a lot of, lot of different governments are approached that way, where, if, you know, I, you know, I, how'd this get on the agenda? I don't, I don't want to consider that tonight, you know? Or, which is not real good either, because you have something that you've published that says you're going to be on it, and so, it would, you almost have to have something that, that, that says if it's controversial, that there's a majority of you that want to have a discussion on this topic.
I just, and which, I understand that, I just don't think that that process is clear to the public. I don't think the public understands that, that a major, especially where the majority of us are agreeing that we want to see that on a general agenda item. And, I mean, I know the briefing sessions are publicly disclosed, and, so I, I don't have a solution for you. It's just a, it's just a topic that's come up several times for me.
So the, so the other issue there, is it a policy item, or is it not a policy item?
All, all the examples I can think of would be policy items, absolutely, yeah.
But can't you just simply, after open public comment, say, you know, thank you for your public comments, if you're the mayor, the city commission and staff will take it under advisement, and then we could follow up the next meeting?
Yeah, that's usually what we do. I mean, we usually say, we'll take it under advisement, and then usually commissioners start comment about whether they want to schedule this for debate.
So, we do that right after public comment? So that's part of this, right here?
So I wouldn't, I wouldn't suggest that, mainly because we haven't had time to, and you haven't had time, to research the topic you're being asked to discuss. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't suggest you have reaction right after a presentation, and that, that you give yourselves and the staff time to, to research the item and brief you on the issues, before you made that decision.
Well, then maybe if we just make it more clear that this will be something, several people are here, this will be something that we'll take under advisement, and the commission will discuss at the next briefing session. I just...
Sure.
I, I don't, I'm not saying that there is necessarily a flaw in our policy, other than people don't understand it. That, and so how can we better present that when people do? So it doesn't feel like when someone comes here for public comment and says something to the commission, that my first comment is about an event that's happening that weekend, and I don't, we don't have to tell, say anything to those people who took time out of their day to come here, about what next steps would be.
Okay.
Just thought, thank you.
I think my experience has been that most people know one of us, and email one of us about something that they want us to talk about, and we usually bring it up at a briefing, or email Ron. If I receive an email about something, I usually try to forward it to Ron or one of our city staff, and say, hey, what are we doing about this? Is this something we should be concerned about? Let's say Uber or something, or Lyft or anything like that, or Tiny Homes, or whatever it is. And that's how some of those things came to our agenda, because we had an interest. We may not have, made a, had an ordinance or anything legislatively done, but we had a discussion, because it came from one of us, and we felt like that's something we want to look into. So I think there are a variety of ways the public can reach us. I just want to know, I, I know we get the, the planning agenda, is that what it is called? Planning chart? Is that on our website for the public as well? And the next, we usually get the next two general sessions, general agendas, just so they're aware, so they're not caught off guard on a Thursday or Friday, and thinking, oh, this is coming up, I don't know, I didn't know it was coming up.
So I don't believe it is. It is, it's a document that changes a lot. It is a public record, so if somebody were to come in at any point and request it, we would make it available. But it's, it's a document, as you will see, I mean, you know, I, I've had the question, well, I thought we were considering this on that, and I said, well, we don't have the support material available or ready for yet, so it's, it's going to, some of them get moved a week, some of them get moved a couple of months, so I mean, it's...
A good suggestion, though, I mean, to put that up there, that planning chart, and just, you know, put a last ditch, this thing changes constantly, you know? It's tentative, and then if, if you have the, you know, the skeleton agenda up there as soon as possible, and then the actual one on Friday, then we've done about all we can humanly do to get the information out to them.
That's where my mind was going, as far as maybe not get too far out in the future, since those change so much, but a little earlier in the week than Thursday or Friday we could post. Because it doesn't, it changes a little bit during that week, but we could get something out like that.
Sure.
Correct.
Sure.
Especially at the works, what work sessions are planned in advance. Those are six months out, and...
And in one of your slides, you know, I had there that, you know, you can contact the commission by email, maybe that will generate some of them, because that, that will then help with the whole public comment process, and we can direct them to the right facts and information, so that we don't have people that are really, you know, going off in the wrong direction, because that happens on occasion. But, but I think that this is, this is a great, I mean, we need this, and the one thing that pops in my mind that nobody's mentioned, was that one night, we had five young ladies come read us a dissertation, lasted about 45 minutes, and it was on a topic the commission had no control over. You know, we, nothing we could do would influence what they were doing, and they were just here for, I don't know what it was, some grandstanding thing. And I don't want to see that happen again. And then what you put in place will, will probably stop that.
Any other questions or comments?
Well, I think you've exhausted us, Kyle.
No, no problem.
Thank you very much, appreciate the presentation and your interaction. Katie, Jackson, thank you. Ron? At this point, if there's anyone here that would like to, from the public, that would like to speak to this discussion, please come forward, you're, you're invited.
We don't have the ordinance in place yet, so you can talk as young as you can.
That's true.
Good evening, I'm Mel Borst, I live at 1918 Humboldt Street, and, and I saw this topic on the agenda, and I was curious about it, and, and I'm glad I came down, and I, I'm really glad about what I'm hearing here. And it's very important to continue to be open to the public and to their comments, and I think it's very important for the dialogue. And I would certainly, on this response to public comment, encourage you to continue to reach out to those that are commenting to you, and engage with them, so they can perhaps tell you as much as they, they possibly can about what you could use. So, I really appreciate your attitude about this. I have been in other communities where there's some pretty strict rules about this, and that was one of the concerns that I had when I just briefly looked at the agenda item. And after being at a session where there were armed policemen in the room, and I had heard that the meeting before I was there, there was actually somebody arrested, a little different politics down there, but I was very glad to be heading back to Manhattan, to where we have such an open government, and a good participation by the citizens. When I did come back, I did have an occasion to talk to Gary about the differences between what I had observed and what we have. And I believe Gary said that the community I was in was a second-class citizen. and we may have different rules, perhaps.
Second-class city, uh-huh.
Yes, yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. And so I'm glad we're a first-class city, and I'm glad we're first-class. Thank you.
Thank you, Mel. You know, it's kind of heartening to have some citizen come and talk about open government, and that's exactly what we've been talking about tonight. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good. I appreciate. Well, there's no further meeting... there's no further business, so I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you all.